Counsel Waring.
So Brad, there was a, I think the second speaker talked about using this ID that we're proposing to get on a plane, I guess. Do you need primary ID to get on a plane?
I'm not familiar with all of the federal rules, but I believe you do need a driver's license or an enhanced driver's license to get on a plane.
And a driver's license at least in Arizona, you need primary ID to get that ID.
It is primary ID.
So this would not help you get on a plane?
Um.
If that's the scenario. If it's not, if you want to check, that's fine too.
I would have to check the federal requirements, but generally speaking, you have to have primary ID to get on a plane, I believe.
The counselor ID was mentioned, and obviously broken hard to hear about the scenario that was presented in that regard. The legislature spoke about the counselor ID recently, right? Last couple of years?
It was actually a few years ago, but the legislature did speak on that issue.
And what, what did they say? Terms of its utility as an ID?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, the political subdivisions of the state of Arizona are barred by statute created by the legislature from accepting a counselor ID.
So can't accept the counselor ID. The legislature obviously has taken an interest in these issues. For all the folks who think I'm just horrible because I don't want this ID, what I don't want is the city to waste a lot of time and money doing something that's not going to solve the problems, the various scenarios, any of them really, except possibly, based on the testimony that we heard for two and a half hours again in subcommittee, maybe some of the identity at school issues, maybe. We'll get to that in a second. But the legislature has weighed in on this. It banned the counselor ID. I think the mayor just told me that John Kavanaugh, a state senator from Scottsdale, proposed a bill to prevent us from doing this. Is that the generally?
I was, I was given information that Senator Kavanaugh had dropped a bill. I've not seen the bill, but he, and I think it means it dropped in the bin. The legislative session hasn't begun yet, but I believe, based upon information, there may be a bill on this subject matter. I don't know the details.
The legislature, if that's true, which I'm sure it's coming if it's not already there, the legislature will prevent the city of Phoenix, and it can, based on experience anyway, it can prevent the city of Phoenix from doing this card. So we can spend a lot of time researching, we can spend a lot of time and money on the card, and then guess what? No card. So the card that wouldn't solve your problems anyway will now not exist. We will have spent a lot of time and money, raised your hopes, had long sessions, accomplished zero. Absolutely nothing. So just food for thought. I was interested to hear the union representative Louis Schmidt spoke about his support of this card. The, the budget that we have for the card currently, what was presented to us in subcommittee, $5 million. Now, it was billed originally as an efficiency. I think maybe Councilman Gates is going to discuss that. But $5 million, our return on that investment is about 20 grand a year, so it'll take us about 200 years to recoup our money. So I guess I wonder for the, if the union representatives are going to come down here and talk about this, I wonder how much of a pay cut they are willing to absorb, given that our budget is already strained, as we heard in testimony yesterday from the city manager. We can't start carving out millions of dollars. This card, or a comparable card in New York, costs $14 million in startup costs and $7 million a year to have the card. San Francisco, it was also some millions of dollars, and then I think also millions to keep it going. People have talked about how, how other cities have cards. That didn't come up here, but it came up in the subcommittee. And I'm talking fast because there's no reason to repeat everything that we heard in a two and a half hour subcommittee the other day. But the Oakland card, you have to have a primary ID to get the Oakland card. So you have to have a passport, social security card, driver's license that required a primary ID, something like that to get their card. Same with Richmond and other cities that we heard about. So again, our card is not going to be comparable to their card. I'm not really sure what problem their card is solving. I'm not sure, as the city manager suggested at the subcommittee, why would you want a city of Phoenix primary card if you already have these other cards? Maybe some people would want it, but we got to try to recoup our money, and this is an extremely expensive item at a time when budgets are stretched rather thin. We talked a little bit about the difference between a primary ID and a secondary ID. Brad, I'll just fast forward, and you can tell me where I'm wrong. It was, in the subcommittee, it was actually equated, the secondary ID, which is what this would be, was equated by Chief Renteria's testimony, which he later kind of changed, but at first it was equated to writing your name on a piece of paper. So then it was stepped up to, it's the equivalent of a Costco card and LA Fitness card. Let me explain why, and the chief can correct me. You get contacted by the police, you produce your secondary ID, I guess thinking that you are good to go. They are going to run you through their system. The only people in their system are people who have primary forms of identification, or have been arrested for a crime. So if you don't show up in either of those and you have your second ID, they still have no idea who you are. It's like showing a library card. Accomplishes? Nothing. So the extent it makes you feel better, that's great, but it's not going to accomplish anything of practical value in the eyes of the police. Chief, is that, you're nodding your head, so am I mischaracterizing in any way?
No, that's correct.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Ms. Scott, did you hear that? Correct from the police. So it's not me making it up. That's actually their testimony. You can take it up with them if you don't like it. As far as policy, I understand. I am sympathetic to these stories that I heard. Do not think that I for a second think it would be easy to get along with no ID. But this ID, as was just suggested, is not going to solve your problem. That, it's still going to be a problem. Brad, could you read the handout you gave us regarding what this ID can't do? It's a long list, or certainly an important list.
Mayor, members of council, there are some things that it can be used for and some things that it can't. Things that it can't be used for are to establish lawful presence in the United States or in the state of Arizona. It can't be used at all if it were based on a counselor identification card, because we've established the legislature prohibited that. It can't be used to obtain employment in Arizona, because that requires the employer to confirm employment eligibility through e-Verify. It can't be used to obtain a business license. It obviously can't be used to register to vote. And it can't be used to obtain a state or local public benefit, except for state retirement benefits or services widely available to the general population.
That's a card that doesn't accomplish a whole lot if you take out all of that. We got into this discussion, I think Bill Gates, for sure, in his efficiency committee, was trying to save money. We have a whole list. Tony, I assume you have your big stack of cards? Oh, I'm disappointed. Never mind. We'll skip it. How many cards are there in your big stack of cards of the city issues already?
Mayor and Councilman Waring, there are about a dozen cards.
Dozen cards. We were trying to reduce a dozen cards to one card, thinking that it would save money. Turns out it was actually prohibitively expensive to put on the kind of medical information and pictures and so forth that people were talking about. I don't even know if the medical information was included, but that was the $5 million item, right? You guys did research. We don't need an RFI to do that. You did the research and you found $5 million bucks.
Correct. Mayor and--
Yep. We'll save $20,000 a year. Again, it will take us way past our lifetimes to recoup that money. So again, unless you want to carve out big holes in an already strained budget, that's not going to work.
Mayor, Councilman Waring, just want to clarify the $5 million. So the $5 million was if we wanted to today combine those cards into one.
Right.
The expense is because of combining technologies that don't work together. That's really the expense of it. Not so much the information on the card, but the systems behind it.
Regardless, it's a $5 million item.
If we wanted to combine all of our city cards into one, yes.
I mean, I'm saying that's where we started with Bill. We found out it was prohibitively expensive. I think my train of thought was consistent. So, and we are not going to recoup much savings at all over the lifetime of the card. Obviously, a lot of people are using phones and other technologies too, so it's debatable how many more years cards will be what's used. But I find it ironic now that we're simply now change that to spending more money to just add to the number of cards. I guess this would be card 13 issued by the city of Phoenix. Great idea came up, fantastic, at the subcommittee about, well, maybe we'll have a bank issue a card. I guess some other cities have done that. So you'd go to a bank, and you get to pay all the big fees and everything that people complain about, and they would store the information. I don't know. I guess, you know, what I see in the paper is Target and banks and so forth have had their information stolen. I'm not sure I, as a councilman, am ready to accept that as a risk that we would have absolutely, the testimony in committee, again, check me if I'm wrong, was that we would have absolutely no control over that whatsoever. So that's, that's also frustrating. Investigate away, but again, I would say that that maybe isn't the best course of action. Also, I'm not sure how many other of my colleagues are willing to get complaints about the fees that would be on the card. We had quite a lengthy discussion of that, perhaps it's immaterial for our purposes here, since nobody's mentioned it. Let's see. Costco, oh, I was not in any way saying that the Costco card and the LA Fitness card are what we should be distributing. I just said the card that we would be distributing will have the legal weight of the Costco card or the LA Fitness card. I mean, I believe, again, that's what was, we were told in committee. Police might be marginally helpful, but it was marginally, it will not help identify you in their system.
Mr. Waring, do you want to respond?
Mayor, Councilman Waring, I can't speak for Chief Renteria, but secondary IDs do have, you know, just like the Costco requires you to show your card in order to get the benefits, secondary IDs that are recognized by the state include things like an employer ID badge, a credit card, debit card, and so those do have identification purposes.
I mean, the Costco card has a picture. My LA Fitness card has a picture.
And I think that the councilman's referring to the testimony of Chief Renteria about the fact that a secondary ID card is one source of information about ID, but generally speaking, and I don't want to speak for the chief, generally speaking, they check the database with, if you show a secondary ID, and I think even if you show a primary ID, if I'm not mistaken, chief.
Chief Renteria, did you wish to provide testimony? Your name's been invoked many times.
Mayor, Councilman, that's, that's correct. Even in a primary ID card, we still check the database to verify that it hasn't been stolen and to just to verify the ID.
But, but then the name is going to pop up in the computer, because they have a primary ID.
That's correct.
And the secondary ID, you're going to check the computer, and unless they have a primary ID--
Or have been arrested.
Then--
It will not show in the, in the database.
I don't know what else there is to say. There's a long list of things that it doesn't do. The things that you want it to do, it doesn't do. It will cost a boatload of money when push comes to shove. So we can do it. The state will prevent us from doing it. We'll have spent a boatload of money. We will accomplish nothing. And I guess, a lot of what I heard was, I want to feel better. I want, you know, feelings were really invoked a lot, but facts are a funny thing. And we will accomplish nothing with this exercise. Thank you.
I think, Councilman Waring, I just want to make clarify, I think Councilman Nowakowski's motion was made in complete good faith, and you spoke a lot about costs. The motion was very specific that this, any RFI would require that a proposal coming back to the council would have to be cost neutral to the, to the city of Phoenix. So I want to make sure it's clear that anything that comes before us would not have to invoke the cost of you that, that you referenced. Councilman Nowakowski, did you have comments?
I was exactly going to ask that clarification, because a part of my motion was to be budget neutral. The other thing is that, talking about the 12 ID cards that we have, or the 12 different cards for different departments and services, is that we're going through a transition right now through the city of Phoenix. We're looking at using technology to its fullest, but we don't have the opportunity right now to interface all this technology yet. We're just barely catching up to it. So right now, as the city manager just stated, if we would happen to turn over all these 12 different cards that we have, it would cost approximately about $5 million. The other thing that we looked at in the parks subcommittee is a primary ID card. That primary ID card would probably be very difficult for the, for the reasons that Councilmember Waring stated. So we looked at the secondary ID card. And a secondary ID card would basically be recognized according to the motion that I put in here, accepted within all city departments and agencies. So basically, it's just like a Costco card. I can't use a Costco card at a Sam's Club or anywhere else. It's recognized at Costco only. So this basically would be a Phoenix card that would be recognized under departments and agencies that work, or that are related to the city of Phoenix in any way. The other thing is that we did look at different options that are out there from the bank card, and I think we should look at all different options that are out there, especially when we talk about budget neutral. And we want to make sure. And those statements that Councilmember Waring stated during the Public Safety Subcommittee, I agree with 100%. It needs to be secure. We need to make sure that if people are going to give us some vital information, data about where their social security, their address, their date, their birth, and all that, that we need to make sure it's secure. We need to make sure that the fees should be at industry standards, that we can't, we can't have a bank card if we, if we do accept it, that's above industry standards. So I think that those are all the things that we directed our staff to look into, and to make sure that there isn't no type of abuse being done at that time. The other thing too, is I just really want to thank all the individuals that came out and have been giving testimonies over the last two years from different subcommittees and different meetings, and advocating and meeting with, with my colleagues here. And we heard you loud and clear. And having that cease support attitude, that yes, we can attitude, that, you know, you're not going to give up, and I'm, it's finally come to now for a vote. And I just really want to thank you all for sharing your private stories. Stories about rape, stories about abuse, stories about your families and seniors that they're not able to get a driver's license. They don't feel comfortable going to the, getting a Phoenix, an Arizona ID, that they feel more comfortable going to a senior center or to the city of Phoenix where they get that customer service, where they feel comfortable, where they feel that there's somebody who cares and will be able to help them get that ID. We have a problem with the homeless right now, and individuals that need home IDs with the homeless shelter. Our relationship with CAS, that we just referred some, some monies to help them out during these hard times, and the different partnerships that we have within the city of Phoenix, and that's what makes Phoenix great. That's what I call the Team Phoenix approach. Working together with the community, working together with the nonprofits, working together with the business community, and working together with all of my colleagues, the government here, that we make positive change. And I believe it is about being a one Phoenix. It is about being a one community, and it's about doing what's best for, for our community at large, and making sure that people feel safe, that we welcome people to the city of Phoenix, that we're tolerant, that we're, we're a city that's inclusive, in that we need to take some type of action to make sure that people feel safe, and that, that we're accessible to everyone in the city of Phoenix. Doesn't matter if you're straight or gay, if you're Catholic or not, or if you're religious or not religious, no matter what walk of life you are, that you feel that you're accepted and that you have accessibility in this great city of ours. So once again, I just really want to thank you all for your continuous advocacy, and for our police officers too. I know that they've been through all kinds of different laws from the state level, from SB 1070, where they were getting trained to ask individuals for IDs, and now they're being told not to ask people for IDs. If I was a police officer, I think it's just a habit of just when you pull someone over, can I see your ID? And, you know, I'm the chair of Public Safety Subcommittee, and I can tell you that since the eight years I've been on console, I've been to seven funerals of fallen police officers. Individuals that have given their lives to protect and to serve this community. And I can tell you that the majority of our police officers are out there to serve and to protect and to help our community. And I want to make sure that they have the tools also to identify individuals when they pull them over, individuals when they are getting called to go to their homes, and that they feel safe also, that they can actually have an ID, that they can look that person up to make sure that that individual is that person that they're saying they are. So, you know, just for the safety of our police officers also, and for our individuals in our community. So thank you all for, for being here and for coming out tonight.
I think Councilman Nowakowski. Councilman Gates, you had some comments?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. There has reference been made to the fact that we started looking at this issue of a municipal services card several years ago in the efficiency subcommittee that I chair. And my vision for this was that we'd get away from all these cards and start using smartphones instead. That was really the focus. And I was recently inspired by a video that I saw, but I'm not going to show it out of interest of time, but I'm going to post it on my Facebook page. Would encourage you all to check it out, on what they're doing with a municipal services card on their, on smartphones in Tel Aviv, Israel. Dominic Papa, who works in my office, has gotten involved in the Smart Cities movement, and he actually went to Barcelona for an international competition that he was involved in. And there, he had a chance to meet with them. So if this motion does pass, again, my focus has always been and continues to be, appreciate all the time that everyone put into coming and speaking this evening, but my focus is really using technology and the efficiency opportunities. And I think that a lot can be learned from Tel Aviv. And to Councilman Waring's concerns, I agree. $5 million just for another card is not a good investment. But if you go on my Facebook page, you watch this video, and you see what they're doing here, it's, it's pretty amazing. When you talk about the services that can be provided to our citizens through the use of technology. So if you're interested, they didn't give me Bill Gates on Facebook for some reason, so you have to look me up on William Gates. But we'll have it posted there, and encourage you to check it out. And I would encourage city staff to talk with Dominic Papa from my office and see what opportunities are available. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilman Gates. A must-watch video. Is it posted now, or when is it going to be posted?
It will be posted soon. I'll let you know as soon as it gets posted.
All right. Councilman Waring.
Thank you. So we talked about the money thing and the revenue neutral. First, it's not revenue neutral now. We've obviously spent a lot of staff time, or going to spend staff time, more staff time working on this. Second, this brought, this came up in subcommittee, so I appreciate the sponsor's motion, you know, and the revenue neutral, but the question, of course, was how to make that work. What are we going to do? Pass the hat in the audience to get them to give us a few hundred grand to, to pay for the front cost on this ID? Because we're going to have to create the ID and gather all the information, or even before we could sell an ID to make it revenue neutral. So that was definitely something. New York pays for its ID, hence the $7 million a year cost. We would have no idea, of course, how many people would ask for this ID. In New York, I think the testimony was 400,000. Is that right, Tony? Maybe it's immaterial, but, but, you know, they're a different city too, so it's hard to gauge exactly how many of these things we would sell, what we'd have to charge for it, and so forth. So it's not--
Yes, Mayor and, yes, Mayor and Councilman Waring, the information that we have is that New York City just introduced their card in January of this year, and they had issued 400,000.
Look at that memory. Fantastic. I feel good. Thank you, Tony. So at some point, one budget year is going to take a pretty appreciable hit, because we're doing this. Again, if Louis Schmidt's fine with that, seemed to indicate he was, okay, but that's less money for public safety employees, and raises, and parks, and all that other stuff. It's going to be a moot point, because I'm sure the legislature will prevent us from even issuing this card, but it will not be revenue neutral. This will be a money loser, just based on the fact that we're going to be spending money for the next however long we're spending it to study this issue. Oh, one issue I didn't double back on was the one area where it was debatable this card might have some minimal benefit was school. School districts. So people who wanted to go to schools. The testimony was that in a lot of schools, to be a volunteer, you had, any kind of regular volunteer, anyway, Brad, again, check me if I'm wrong. I want to make sure my facts are straight. You would need a fingerprint clearance card, and you can only get a fingerprint clearance card with a primary form of ID, which this would not be. Is that correct?
So Mayor, Councilman Waring, some school districts don't have that requirement.
Agreed.
Others do.
I said some areas.
It's variable. Those school districts that do require a fingerprint ID card typically require a DPS fingerprint card, and that requires a social security card in order to get that.
Okay. So no social security card, no fingerprint card, no volunteering at the schools on a regular basis. But some schools, I think there was testimony from one, I believe he was a school board member, so I did want to double back on that, because I said I would. So there is, that was about the only real tangible benefit that came out of the subcommittee.
I thank you very much, Councilman Waring.
Mayor, some clarification?
Councilman Nowakowski, clarification of that point, and then I'm going to get to councilors that haven't had a chance to speak yet.
Already.
Councilman Williams and Councilman Gallego.
I, I believe that this ID card would help out with getting a library card for our own facilities. Actually, when you go landfill and you want to take a load of trash, that you would have to produce either your water bill or proof that you are paying the water bill, so that would actually serve for that. So those 12 cards that we have, they can actually help you receive those 12 cards. You need some type of ID to get a library card or any of those services that we provide. Also, we just heard from, a testimony from the school board member, that the largest high school, school district in the city of Phoenix is going to accept this card. Also, one of the largest elementary school districts are going to accept it also. So I can tell you that my, my kids, when I go visit them, you have to get a visitor's tag, and you have to leave some type of ID. And I believe that this Phoenix ID would be acceptable to get a visitor's pass to walk along my, my child's school.
Thanks very much. Councilman Williams, did you have comments?
I have a question to start off with. What exactly is the motion?
It was a long time ago. That is correct.
Yeah, and it was a very long motion, and then you shortened it, and I want to know what was on the table.
I think the, I'll, let me give it my best shot from memory. Councilman Nowakowski can correct me if it's wrong. It's that if this motion passes, it would authorize the city staff to go through with an RFI process for a municipal services ID card. That would have to be cost neutral. It's not part of the motion, but you've heard testimony and maybe hear from others too, about consumer protections have to be in place if there was a banking or finance institution partner, so that we don't get a predatory lender to be the lending partner on this. But that the, so the RFI would be authorized staff to issue it. It would have to be revenue neutral, be presented back to this council, not subcommittee, but the full council, early next year. I forget the exact date. And then the final, put in place by the summer of 2016 would be the final date, if you will, if we can meet the requirements of the RFI.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great memory, Mayor.
Yeah, I'm pretty impressed. But I, I have issues with this. I, knowing the budget, truthfully, I have to choose between paying our employees what I think we owe them after all this time, and choosing this, I have to go with employees. They have suffered long too. I will say I, I have great empathy for what I hear, what I've heard, and what I know. Many cases, it is absolutely true, but I, I can't justify the city spending the money. And I have great difficulty in turning all that private information over to a firm, a corporation, when we have no control over what they do with it, how secure it remains, and what the fees would be, and the process. If the city were to do this, then the city needs to control it and be in charge of it. But right now, we just simply can't afford it. That's my position.
Thank you very much, Councilman Williams. Councilman Gallego?
Thank you very much. I second the motion today, because I think it's important that we need to move forward with this step. We've heard from the community very strongly that we need this. This did not come from City Hall, but from people throughout our community, advocates for homebound, for runaway youth, from really across the community. And we heard some very powerful stories today. Thank you to Raquel and others who shared very personal stories about why this is important. It is also important for the city, as we speak to the legislature, to say, the city determines what ID we take for city services. That is within our bounds, and we need to protect our rights as a city to govern the services that our city provides. So this will be important opportunity for us to do so. We do a lot of work with people who need to be, have ratings on their disability status to be able to get differential access to bus passes and others. I really do hope we look at that and see if we can put it in all in one place, as we've heard in important testimony today. Would love it if we could lead the way in sharing emergency medical information. This really is a broad request for information, where we look at what is out there in the community, and see how our partners can help us solve the challenges we face in the city of Phoenix. We have a lot of great entrepreneurs, and I strongly suspect that we're going to hear solutions that we haven't heard before, that really will help us move forward. So it's an exciting time for our city. Phoenix is an inclusive community, and when we say that, we mean it. The ID card will make our city stronger and safer, and I look forward to supporting it.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilman Gallego. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I made some comments in the last subcommittee. It was a special Public Safety Subcommittee, and I, I want to repeat a few of those comments, because I'm, I'm hearing a lot of the same conversation here from the DA's. Before we decide what the card is, what it looks like, what it's going to be used for, the weight of the card, who our partners will be, you know, the public-private partners, who the lender will be, why don't we issue an RFI, which is the motion? Which was the motion three months ago in Councilman Pastor's Subcommittee, a motion that I made and that you seconded, and an identical motion that was made a week ago, I believe, in the Public Safety Subcommittee. Why don't we, why don't we ask our staff to do an official RFI to figure out exactly what it is that we're talking about here? According to the motion, according to the motion maker, this is something that would be cost neutral. Does that mean that it's totally cost neutral? I guess not, because now we're talking about authorizing staff and staff time to be put on this item, and of course, staff time equates to a dollar figure. But this is, this is important to the community. We have taxpayers who are in this room and who represent other taxpayers, whether it be spouse, grandparents, friends, organizations. And the taxpayers are saying this is something that's worthy of research, and we would like to ask city staff to research this. We will get information that will tell us if it, if it was cost neutral, or if it wasn't cost-- cost neutral, but there's a dollar figure attached to it, and then we can decide as policymakers, how to move forward at that point. I think we're getting ahead of ourselves, you know, to, and, and some of the, the conversation that is happening up here, and I, I figure, I, I guess, why even do an RFI? It's already been figured out. You can't use it to get on to an airplane, or go visit your children at school, or to do this, or to do that, or whatever the case might be. If it was that simple to do things from the dais, you know, I mean, can you imagine making decisions without, without using the charter, without asking our subject matter experts to work with other subject matter experts around the city, the valley, the state, the country, or even the world, to try to figure out what it is that we should do here at the city of Phoenix? So, this is something that I, that I'll continue to support. I'm, I'm hope, and I'm, I'm hoping that this is passed. Again, we're talking about an RFI. We're not talking about, in fact, the $5 million figure, let me just mention that for just a moment. When that $5 million figure came up, what, I questioned it, because I wondered how we got there without even doing an RFI. If we haven't done our, and, and a lot of it was because, frankly, we have some upgrades that we desperately need in our IT department. I gotta tell you, we are fortunate to have Ms. Cotton, Debbie, we are fortunate to have Debbie Cotton. Things could be much worse, but I will tell you, you know, it's, it is an uphill battle. We have some major upgrades that we need with the city's IT infrastructure, and if we were, if, if we had everything we needed, then we wouldn't be talking about a $5 million, a round figure of $5 million, because we'd have the infrastructure, and we've had the, the software that allows all of these departments, all of these cards, whether it's, you know, parks and rec, libraries, whatever, to interface, but I'm hoping that the RFI will, will, will get us some of that information as well. So that said, there is a motion, there's a second. I'm in favor. I, I believe Councilman Waring would like to say a few words. I may, I may wanna follow up as well.
Okay, just a second, we, so we, Councilman, or Vice Mayor just made his comments. Councilman Gates, did you have any additional comments?
Yes, Mayor, the video is up on Facebook, so to make sure that everyone knew about that. Techno, we're moving at the speed of business. I think somebody else says that somewhere.
They don't call you Bill Gates for nothing.
Yeah, but, and so I would encourage you all to take a look at it, because that's, that's really my vision of where we ought to go with it, and with all due respect, because of a lot of the reasons that have been mentioned by some of my colleagues, I'm not, I'm not there with, with this card, that discussion that's gone on this evening, but again, I appreciate everyone being here, and appreciate all the effort of staff. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Waring, did you have one, a final comment?
Uh, do, got an email update from our legislative team. FYI, state legislation was, legislation was introduced by Senator John Kavanaugh, Senate Bill 1017 regarding municipal IDs. The bill does some of the following, so apparently it's not, this is a truncated version of what it does. Bill does some of the following. One, it allows for the establishment of municipal card for services. However, two, any such card must indicate that it's only for municipal services and not for identification purposes. Three, these cards must have the same procedures that it takes to receive a state identification card. So, tough to get. Four, the card cannot look like any of the current identification cards, and five, these requirements would also apply to third-party providers, so banks and so forth, I assume is what he means, of these cards. Uh, they have a link to the bill, and session starts January 11th.
I thank you very much, Councilman Waring. All right, any other comments? I don't, I don't know what the motion's gonna pass for now, but Tony, my suggestion is you look at bank on national account standards, which kind of best practices in the banking industry, and just make sure that if there's any financial institution or banking partners that we bookmark it versus the best practices in the industry, to make sure that anything we do doesn't invite a predatory lender into, into this community, and to take advantage of, of people. All right, so we've heard the testimony, we have a motion, we have a second. No other comments? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
No.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Waring.
No.
Williams.
No.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes, the motion passes on a 5-4 vote. All right, we'll, we'll take, we'll give the one ID advocates about 30 seconds or so to celebrate, but then you gotta go, we have a lot of other business on the agenda. Thanks for coming down. All right, we'll take about a 30-second break here, and give them a chance to take a few selfies, looks like. All right, I appreciate the celebration. I see a lot of hugging, but I gotta ask politely that you go outside only because we have the rest of an agenda to complete here tonight? Can we put the video on meanwhile? Traffic to Bill Gates' Facebook site quadrupled during that last, same.
It's up to four people. Fantastic.
Ooh, now we're going, all right, let's get back to the agenda. Next item on the agenda is item number 79.2. 79.2 is a proposal for an eight-hour rule request, requesting that approval for staff to spend an excess of eight hours of time to negotiate a possible development agreement, including the use of a gross property light lease excise tax for the property located 7th Avenue in Fillmore. This was an proposed add-on that came in, I guess, just in, under the wire yesterday. I guess, for that reason, I would turn it over to Paul Blue and the professional staff to explain what the proposal is.
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, the owners of the property at 7th Avenue and Fillmore, who are developing a 230-unit apartment complex, have requested the city consider the use of the government property lease excise tax. This is, their request has occurred across a number of months, and based on feedback from the council, staff is prepared to take the direction of the city council, if it wishes us to go pursue the development of a development agreement that would afford the use of the government property lease excise tax as requested by the property owner, and we stand ready to answer your questions and take your direction.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, does city staff have a recommendation on this item?
Mayor, councilmembers, we, the city staff has not recommended it, not recommended a G government property lease excise tax request two previous times from the property owner.
Okay, I'll turn to any member of the council. Does any member of the council have a motion on 79.2?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to permit staff to work over eight hours to come, come up with a solution on the Fillmore and 7th Avenue, if, to look at different options that are out there.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Do you have any cards on this item? There are no cards on this item. Do we have any comments by members of this council? Councilman DeCiccio.
I'll be supportive of moving forward to find a way to, if there's a way to financially make this work for them. I don't support giblets, I never voted for those, but I'd like you to see what other alternatives there are out there. I know that the project's been delayed considerably for some time, so what other auctions are out there, I'd like you to take a look at that as well. Thank you.
All right, and we're not, we're only agendized for a certain item. What are we agendized for, Mr. Home?
For waiver of the eight-hour rule, to allow, to authorize staff to spend more than eight hours on negotiating or attempting to satisfy the concerns of the property owner, negotiating with him regarding the government property lease excise tax issue. So, it, strictly speaking, it's the, it's an eight-hour rule request, essentially that you authorize staff to spend more than eight hours on this matter.
Okay.
On the giblets, or?
On negotiating with the property owner over that issue.
Are other, are other ways of financially helping them?
That's where I'm getting confused.
It's, it's, agendized only for waiver of the eight-hour requirement, so that, that in, that staff can spend more than eight hours pursuing the issue.
The request from the property owner has consistently been for a government, G-ple, government property lease excise tax. Those are done through development agreements that staff would have to negotiate. They would have to negotiate that and bring it back to the council, in some sort of framework for you to approve or not.
Mayor, clarification on my motion. My motion was about allowing staff to have over eight hours of looking at financial opportunities and helping this, this developer out in that 7th Avenue in Fillmore. One of the problems that we're having is downtown is developing greatly, and that right now, right on 3rd Street and Roosevelt, it's probably 200, over $200 a square foot to rent a, an apartment, so it's probably one of the most expensive, I mean, places to rent in the city of Phoenix, if, if I'm not, if I'm not wrong. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Uh, Mayor, Councilman Nowakowski, there are a lot of market rate multifamily projects being developed in downtown, and the rents have certainly increased across the last number of years, that is true.
So we're looking at probably about $300 to $400 less than what's being market rate right now in, in this downtown area. So what we're happening is that, at one time, we were looking at Hispanic communities that were in the downtown area, where the city of Phoenix, back when we were looking at building a stadium, a Cardinal Stadium, went out, and we basically bought out some of these neighbors, and now some of their children that have lived in this area for decades would like to come back and live in this area, and we just wanna make sure that there's some moderate housing that individuals that work in downtown could afford to live in downtown. Not affordable housing, but workforce housing. So this is a fine opportunity for individuals not to be priced out of their own neighborhoods, and now we're looking at the University Park that's just right across 7th Avenue, and hopefully that doesn't happen to that community neither. So we need to really make sure that our community continues to be multicultural within the downtown area, and this is a fine example of how we can actually preserve that and give those opportunities, those families that wanna live in downtown and work in downtown could afford to live in an apartment in downtown Phoenix. So that's the reason why I'd really like to see staff look at opportunities and financial opportunities that we can help out developers that would make moderate living in downtown Phoenix possible.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Gallego.
No.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
No.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
No.
Mayor Stanton. No, the motion fails on a 4-4 vote. Next item on the agenda is the planning and zoning matters before this city council. Item, well, let's see, first, you have an omnibus motion on planning and zoning matters.
Motion to approve items 80 through 94, except the following items, 89, 90, 93, 94.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a second. I'm sorry. We know, it's like, yeah, Councilman Williams jumped in just in time. All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Gallego.
Yes.
Gates.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. Next item, Vice Mayor. This is 89. We're now on 80, item number 89, I apologize. Item number 89 is a request to remove, well, I'll turn to Mr. Allen Stevenson, our planning director. What is item 89?
Mayor, members of council, item 89 is a request to remove the special permit to, that allows for an additional auto sales use on a property that is located at the southeast corner of 23rd Avenue and Camelback. The property owner is wishing to develop a commercial retail center under the underlying existing C2 zoning. You see on the map before you hear, the predominant land use around the area is C2. The special permit allows for auto sales and was put on in the early 70s, and then reaffirmed in 2001. However, some of the C2 underlying zoning dates back to the 1960s. You see here the aerial for the site, here it is in its context when it was used for an, an auto dealership in the past. Staff does support removal of this special permit. It was approved by the Alhambra Village Planning Committee by a 10 to 0 vote, the Planning Commission also by a 6 to 0 vote. This request does not do anything to the underlying C2 zoning. The property owner has property rights to that C2 zoning. The special permit only gave over and above zoning to allow the auto sales use. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Stevenson? All right, Councilman Pastor, this is in your district, you can either make a motion now, or hear the cards, and then make a motion thereafter, it's up to you.
Um, we can hear the cards.
Okay, so I have a, probably six or seven cars on this item. The first speaker on the item will be Mike Withy, who represents the applicant on the item. Mr. Withy, please come forward, and you're gonna present your case, and I think you wanted to reserve a little time in case there is something you wanted to have rebuttal on thereafter, which is fine with me.
Yes, please, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Withy, please go ahead.
I'll be, I'll be brief, thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, for your record, Mike Withy, representing Dorito Partners. With me is Marty Dorito and our team. I will try to be brief, but this is a big deal for us and for the neighborhoods, and we've been working very hard for a very long time. I would submit to you that there are three things that can happen to this property. It can remain a vacant lot fenced up, it could be a used car dealership, the remaining structures are there, or we can do what we wanna do, which is build a brand-new shopping center. In my mind, in my world of zoning, this is a very straightforward case. It's just the removal of the special permit. As Allen said, the C2 zoning is already in place, and is, underlying has its rights. I, I think, as staff mentioned, there's some legal limitations on the city's discretion to not allow the, the special permit to be removed, and I, I can't imagine that they would say to us that the only thing we can do with our property is to, is to build a car dealership, when obviously those car dealerships have pretty much all moved and to the east or other areas of the city. But there's more important stuff than that, and that is that we've done everything you ask an applicant to do. I can't remember any case that I've ever been involved in that has this much support. We are here tonight with a recommendation from your professional planning staff, a support from your economic development staff, we're here from, with a unanimous recommendation from your village planning committee, which if you know that village planning committee, that was, there are some diverse attitudes on that village planning committee, so I, we are very proud of that, and a unanimous recommendation from your planning commission. Both of the relevant HOAs, which are shown on the screen, which is the Westwood Community Association, south of Camelback, and the Community Sit, uh, Association, south of Camelback, and the Simpson Neighborhood Association, north of Camelback, their presidents of those associations have written letters on support of this case, um, and I think they're both here and will be speaking tonight. We've also worked with the Mark Atkins Center and the elementary school to try to be a good corporate partner. We've already are sponsoring some Saturday lunch programs and having discussions with them about how we can, uh, be a good corporate partner, um, and continue to support the community and the neighborhood. We also went into the neighborhoods, spoke to the owners. We've submitted to you 500, uh, and more than 560 letters, uh, of support. That is the most I've ever been involved in any case. Um, and, and I think the point is this, there's not one person that we spoke to in the neighborhood that said, geez, I really hope the city council turns down the special permit removal so we get a used car dealership. There's not one person that said that to us. So I think I would submit to you that we've done everything that you ask an applicant to do. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I will reserve other comments. I know there's other comments on the record, so I would like to come back up and maybe address those if there are additional points.
Thank you very much, Mr. Withy. Any questions for Mr. Withy? Next will be Chantal Medina, marked as opposed to the proposal.
Hello, uh, City Council and Mayor Greg Stanton. I know a few of you know me as a community member. Um, I've actually walked for some of our city council members that are in office now. Um, so again, my name is Chantal Medina. I am a community member. I currently live at 1642 West Campbell Ave., which falls under Laura's, um, district, which, um, which is also up the street from this development. Um, I have been involved in the community for about four years now. Um, this includes, uh, voter registration and also convincing people to go out and vote, because it's very important to me. Um, this will directly affect me. I have used my time to speak to everyone in order to engage my community and make them aware of the upcoming, uh, development. And like he said, they were approached by, um, other developers. And they were also, uh, told that there was gonna be an L-Super placed by February 2016. Um, while I was walking through my neighborhood, I was informed by many neighbors that they were reached out by L-Super representatives. I was curious to know what they were talking about, as well as collecting from my fellow community members. Uh, last week, I was actually able to go through the 411 cards, uh, that were sent to our city council. Um, I used my own time to call through these and contacted 65 of the 411 people. 63 of these 65 people, uh, said that they felt misinformed by the L-Super reps, and have had a very big worry on the actual traffic report that hasn't been done in that area since the 70s. Um, they felt very compelled to sign a different card requesting, um, the traffic impact study to be done by city council. So here are the 63 cards from the people who, uh, initially signed the, um, their letter, and now came back and said that they're actually not in favor of it. So here are the 63. Um, I only had the opportunity to call through that list, uh, one time. However, I know that if I were to have called through it again, we would have had more members, uh, asking for this traffic study to be done.
Thank you so much.
And do you guys want?
Yeah, please, grab, please. Uh, the next speaker, I think, had to leave, uh, earlier, Haley Ritter, who marked, she's in favor of the proposal. Is, Haley was able to come back? I think she was here earlier for the, uh, meeting. Uh, marked as opposed, Alyssa Avalos. Are you still here?
Yes.
Please, come forward.
Uh, so my name is Alyssa Avalos, and, um, I'm sorry, good evening, councilmembers and Mayor Greg Stanton, my name is Alyssa Avalos, and I live on 47, 40, 49 North, 26 Lane, that is off of 27th Ave. and Camelback, so the development is like right down the street from me. And, uh, for the past year, I have worked to get my community engaged, um, in what's taking place in the city and in the neighborhood, whether it's, whether it's registering voters or encouraging the community to go out and vote. Um, work has been done to make sure that the area is aware of the L-Super development. We have collected about 672 cards, right here, signed by residents of the community, um, who are against L-Super developing on the 23rd Ave. and Camelback development. Um, the overwhelming concern on these cards was traffic, whether it's the foot traffic that this, uh, supermarket will bring, or the safety, or the extra traffic that the market will bring, and the safety of the students, who I believe is Westwood Elementary, walking home. And, um, traffic on 23rd and Camelback is already a really big problem, and the fact that many people were not aware of the traffic that this market will bring is also another problem. And, um, it's important that the community addresses an issue, and that issue must get addressed. So here are the 672 cards that were signed by people saying that they were against the development. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Uh, Ms. Avalos. Next speaker, Thomas Barton, marked in favor of the, of the proposal.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I live on Elm and 21st Avenue, which you can almost see on the picture up there. Uh, it's about one block away from the property, and I fully support this, uh, redevelopment. Recently, we've seen a lot of great things happen on Central and Camelback. We've seen some great stuff with GCU on the other side of I-17, and, but it seems like this part of Camelback's been forgotten, and right now, it's just an abandoned car lot. Uh, it's an ISO, it serves no one except to be a place to collect trash and graffiti. Uh, my hope is that such a large redevelopment will kickstart other development around the area, and this new redevelopment will improve the community, it will bring new jobs, and it'll provide new opportunities to my neighbors. And with the traffic, traffic concerns, uh, we don't really have any, and I live really close, you know, that, the Dorito Group has come to the past four community meetings and been very open to feedback, and that, I think they've addressed all those traffic concerns by closing off the back end of the property to Westwood. So I just, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Barton, for your testimony. Next we'll hear from Robert Zamora, who's marked as neutral. Mr. Zamora, you here?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff, my name's Robert Zamora, I'm the president of the school board for Alhambra Elementary School District. I'm here to talk tonight about this property. The real concern is what is going to happen to the property, and I know that we've been hearing a lot of things, but ultimately, tonight we hear that they want to place a supermarket. Some of my background is, I'm one of few people that actually represented us at the nation's capital, okay, when it dealt with the Robert Johnson Foundation on healthy communities. And one of the things that we studied there was the great impact that, uh, food deserts have on not, not only our students, but our communities. So it's really important for me to know what type of supermarket's gonna be placed there, and exactly what type of structure that's gonna take, and what type of look that's gonna have. I don't want it to be a car lot any longer. Lived in the community all my life, I've served on two different school boards in that community, and I'm telling you today that all that's gonna do is bring blight. All that's gonna do is play a part for urban campers, drugs, and graffiti, and we can't have that in our community. But instead, what I like to see is a business that supports the school district and supports the community. With the understanding of the importance of not having a food desert, in fact, a market with fresh produce and fruits and meats for our children and community is what is important. And all must understand that the research shows that communities having access to such markets, the residents tend to have healthier lives and healthier diets, but not only that, lower levels of obesity. But I must caution that we have to continue to look at the impact that this is gonna take on our children of our community. I'd be remiss to fight and say that that's my number-one priority as the board president, and we have to look at all those areas to include a new liquor license going in there, and how that would impact our students. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Zamora. Thanks for your service on the board of Alhambra High School, or Alhambra, excuse me, grade school, one of our most important districts in the city. Uh, next-